Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is John Iton with Rochester area builders and welcome to our second town hall, virtual town hall meeting with the Ward two candidates. Like to thank both gentlemen for running for office as someone who has done that himself. It's it's not an easy thing to do, so I appreciate your willingness to serve. Your reward is to get yelled at, so. Nobody comes to you and says, "Good job," but you know what? That's here or here or there. So I'm going to turn it over to our moderators and I will hide myself again and mute myself and let anybody know if there's any questions that come up. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and welcome, Michael and Mark, to our second ever virtual candidate forum with the Rochester area builders and Southeast Minnesota Realtors. To open our candidate forum, what we'd like to do is to allow each candidate to make a brief opening statement, introducing themselves or describing their candidacy or the focal points of what they think their candidacy would be. And with that, I will turn it over to Michael.
All right. Thank you for thank you for having me. A lot of you, I probably know everyone who's watching this, so I've had the pleasure of working with you for 12 years. And in that time, I believe every time you've ever contacted me, you've gotten a response. Every time you've ever requested a meeting, you've gotten that presence. And every time you've ever asked a question, you've gotten an honest answer. That's how I roll. That's what I will continue to do. Actually, I have about 12 years of experience doing this role and literally hundreds of millions into the billions of dollars of development done in my time on the city council. So it's been really exciting to kind of learn this as I as I've gone through. One thing that I've been able to do very well on the city council is bring developers, neighborhoods and the city together to get big projects done. Big projects are always hard. Change is hard. I understand that. I am actively, I stand up to NIMBYism. I promote infill development. And you've seen that firsthand. You've seen the positive changes we've made in our development staff. You see the one-stop shop that we're creating. You see the adoption of Xcela. You see increasingly more technology. We continue to drive down the amount of time it takes to get permits. So together, we have accomplished quite a lot and just seeing this development going on and the continued interest in development in what is otherwise a really incredibly tough time for local government. That's a testament to the entire community and how good we really have it here in Rochester.
Thank you, Michael. Mark?
Hi, yeah, my name is Mark Bransford. This is the first time I've ever run for office, but I have what I believe are fairly well thought out integrated set of three pillars. But before I go there, a little bit about me. Let's see, I was born in Seattle. My dad was in the military, so I've moved around a lot. Lived in really, really big cities like Miami and really itty bitty towns like Waverly, Iowa. And landed here in Rochester about 20 years ago. We bought our first starter home in Slatterly and then we moved over here to Fallwell about 2011, 2012. And even just in 20 years, we've seen a lot of changes in Rochester, a lot. And I feel like the city needs to move in a slightly or needs to move in a different direction. My first big pillar, the thing that really is the fundamental basis of my candidacy, what I call balanced growth. And by that, I mean, we're really not seeing. We're not really seeing a diversity of housing. The residential market has been going down, down, down. We see a lot of focus on luxury, high-density, uh, luxury, high-density housing downtown, which is fine. We do need infill development, but not at the exclusion of a building all the way to the edge of the city. And I believe that we need to change course and we need to revive the residential market. I think we need far more ownership options in the high-density that we will be developing. And that's just not happening right now. And so I'd like to change that.
Thank you, Mark, and welcome Denise. You entered at essentially what I will call the perfect time.
Yeah, well, I've been watching. I've been just having a hard time in my internet. To be honest with you, it's fading in and out all day long when I need it the most. So. That's been my day.
With that, we are at the stage of the process where you have the opportunity to make a brief opening statement and introduce yourself as a candidate to the community.
You got it. So I'm Denise Welty, obviously. Last but not least to the show today. I'm excited to be here. Grew up in Rochester, third generation. Worked in and out and around the city, worked across the country as well. My husband and I are both have flipped many homes. We've owned like 17 homes over the last 40 years. Would have bought and owned more, but the market doesn't dictate that right now. We've also created affordable housing in a sense for rehabbed homes in the area. My husband worked as a real estate agent for a while in Rochester and also broker. We moved back here from the Washington DC area and there was no aerospace jobs for him here. So we started creating our own. We've owned a lot of businesses. I have, I was secretary treasurer for the area labor council here in Rochester. I've also was a rep for the school workers in RST here in the public schools. So I've got a lot of experience, had a lot of experience with handling large budgets and being very accountable. I'm extremely frugal person, but I'm here today to say it's time for change and I'm ready for that change. Michael does, you come with a lot of experience over the last 12 years, but you two started off kind of the same place where where myself and Mark are and we're, you know, eager to learn and move forward and in the direction the city needs to go so we can all thrive and be successful here. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. And with that, we'll open it up with our first question. As I'm sure you three know, Rochester is facing a severe housing shortage in all segments of the market. You know, what do you believe are the best steps for the city to take to address this issue? And do you believe this city should take an active role in addressing the community's broader housing shortage? And I will direct our first question to Michael initially.
All right. Love, love, love this question. This has been my life for since about 2011. And particularly affordable housing has been a huge challenge for the community. BHRA is truly the leaders that we need to be leading on this, but the city certainly has a partner role. Specifically, what do I think we as a city need to? Well, the first step was to update our comprehensive plan that was written before I was born. And that was a long battle to get done, but we along with partnership with the builders and the Realtors and a lot of other folks in the community, we finally got that updated. It's much more sustainable. It focuses on things like infill and transit-oriented growth and makes it much easier. Second thing we have to do is we have to update the zoning codes. Obviously, we're creating this unified development code, which is going to be a huge win for the community. I know that's supported by just about everyone in the, everyone in the community. We've also got the one-stop shop that's coming forward. And there's important changes that we've already made. Now, you're going to hear some people who speak against R2X. They think it's the wrong thing to do. I disagree. I think it's absolutely the right. We need more permissive, by right zoning in places where it's appropriate. And also TOD. I am committed to proceeding with the DMC transit plans. That is one of my highest priorities. As you can see, we've had a tremendous amount of development along the potential transit line. I think that that TOD and R2X is a great first step. And I think you're going to see that mapped more, expanded more and cleaned up more in the UDC. So we're taking the steps we need from a building standpoint to make this happen. Obviously, there's capital and economics on the other side, but as a city, I think we're headed in the right direction on that.
Thank you, Michael. Mark?
In the time that I've had to speak with a lot of people and learn things, one of the things that I believe we need to do is reduce the permit fees significantly. And one of the ways to do that is to do as much online as we can, like Xcela. We also need to recognize that any delays are very expensive for developers. So the time we can get the permits issued, that we need to reduce that time, which online helps. I talked to somebody today who said they have to submit plans in paper and triplicate. And that was, we're one of the last cities to ever do that. And so we need to get everything as electronic and as online as possible. One of the things that I learned from one of you is that we have our own electrical codes or at least our own interpretation of them. Things like that need to change, tree ordinances, things like that. We need to maybe even consider, you know, getting rid of those, having one set of codes, not a city set of codes that interprets the electrical codes differently. All the way around, there's too much red tape. It's too expensive. And the developers pay the price on that length of time, the delays. So we need to, we need to fix that.
Thank you, Mark. Denise?
Yeah, just so, just for clarity, you're talking about the first question, right? Affordable housing.
Uh, I'm just talking about the housing market in general.
I had a breakup. Okay.
Yeah, I'm talking about the severe housing shortage in Rochester and what the city can do to address it in a broader sense.
Sure. Okay, got it. So why, while I believe the taxpayer, the city government in essence, should not directly spend money for affordable housing, I do think it's imperative that the local government and area developers come up with the solutions that will help developers be able to build affordable housing. And a lot of that is going to be redoing some of the red tape that you guys have to go through and have a simpler process so that we can, you know, get things done in a faster manner. Because I know firsthand what it takes to get through all the red tape with all the codes and everything that happens when you go to build. But one possibility that I would, I would really like to see was, you know, is sites like a special zoning for land and maybe like under 1,000 square feet for smaller homes. Or, you know, like a smaller home community that would benefit the seniors. It would create affordable housing. And another aspect that I'd like to see happen would be homes that, you know, that for first-time home buyers, they're struggling. You know, I have kids in the community as well and grandkids. And my oldest grandchild is 18 now. And I tell you what, I worry about them being able to afford. We're pricing everything out of this city as far as, you know, first-time home buyers and making things affordable. But we really have to take a hard look at what is stopping us, what's preventing that from happening and fixing. And I think the solution is everyone in the room figuring that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
All right. Thank you to all three of you that are going to participate this afternoon. Welcome. Again, I'm Eric and I'm going to ask question number two. That is, the city has undertaken the task of updating the land development manual. Much of that update will happen during your time on council if you're elected. What areas of the new unified development code would you focus on as part of that process and why? And we will start with Mark.
Yeah, I think that we should eliminate minimum lot sizes. One of the things that I should be able to do when I want to build a house is build it on any lot size I want. And I think we need to trim down the approval process. There's a lot of, from what I understand, we need to slim it down and say, have a fair amount of type one approval process. Where, you know, I remember sitting through some zoning and planning meetings where someone wanted a variance on where they put a fence or a garage or something like that. And the fact that it went all the way to planning and zoning seemed really strange to me. So I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of processes that can be done without the city council weighing and without the planning and zoning commission weighing in. And I haven't seen a draft of the UDP, but if that's in there, that really, I think, is one of the places where we need to concentrate is just making it faster and getting rid of lot sizes. And the other thing actually that I think of is I believe that they're significantly rewriting the restricted development codes. And that always was a bit vague. The language isn't very well codified. There was these aesthetic clauses that seemed to just get ignored. So, you know, I think there's some loopholes there that are going to get closed or at least codified and tightened up. And I think that's important, too.
Thank you, Mark. Denise?
Sure. Well, when I, you know, first read that question, I had to read it a couple of times. I'm just being honest. And then when I looked into it, I was like, wow, this is like a huge undertaking. This is a big project. But, um, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure which piece that I would particularly pick out. I think it hones back to the first question and how do we develop faster and make things easier? And, you know, it's got to be a hard look, but I also want to talk to, I have a lot of friends that own land properties, businesses in the area, of course. And I really wanted to have some hard conversations with them as well because I'd like to represent like the constituents that I, that I do represent or will hopefully represent. So that's kind of where I'm at. It's kind of a hard question for me.
All right. Thank you. And last, Michael, the UDC and land development manual.
Yeah, with all the, with all the talk of the internet connection, I just wanted to point out one of the many things I've been able to do in offices, take on the charter broadband monopoly and win. And hopefully the citywide will have better internet here pretty quickly. This, this building code is something I've actually been actively involved in already. And what I would say is that yes, to a lot of the things that I've heard, but I think you have a little bit of a sneak peek of what this is going to be with the R2X and the TOD zoning. Obviously, I was a huge supporter of that and getting it mapped into the community. R2X is a good baseline for what you might expect to see for residential zoning in the future. I think that it's critically important that we get, we have far fewer zones. We're going to get rid of the restricted development process altogether, go with a more refined incentive development process. We're also going to consolidate the number of residential zones and allow more things within those zones. It shouldn't be a big deal to build a, you know, a three or four condo units on a, on a single-family lot. That's just something that should be able to happen in cities right now. That's the kind of direction that we're moving for. It's also critically important that we identify the places where we can build affordable housing, dense housing, and do it where it's appropriate. And that's largely going to be along the transit corridors. So certainly increased emphasis on the TOD zoning is going to come out of this as well. This is a big, exciting thing. It's not something that's happening in the future. It's going on right now. And I'm excited to be really making this simpler and more effective for the community.
Thank you. All right, you know, and I think our next question up is going to be talking about development downtown versus outside of the downtown core area. I think we realize when you drive north on Broadway and you're trying to hang a left almost anywhere, once you get into downtown, that there's a lot of development going on there. And a lot of that development is supported by city and state financing for infrastructure and new infrastructure within the core. At the same time, the city has passed a few policies that have made it more expensive to grow the boundary of the city or to develop on the outer edges of the city that isn't already served by that infrastructure. You, what can the city do to support development outside the downtown core? And do you think it should? And if you can, just explain your answer. Denise, I believe you are first up.
Sure. Well, I do think we need to look at expanding outside the city and primarily because of transportation and congestion downtown. I mean, if we stay downtown, the only way we can really go now anymore is up or tear things down and move into neighborhoods, which I don't think we should necessarily do. So I think we have to think outside the box a little bit and figure that piece out. But I do think the city would be better off serving businesses, you know, outside of the corridor or outside the city proper. Um, also, I think the city, you know, just on the, on another question that was in earlier that I wanted to just touch on quick with businesses is I don't think that they're being supported like they should. We've seen so many close prior to the, to the pandemic and now we're seeing more closed. And that's kind of worrisome. I think the businesses here are taxed to death right now. It's just astronomical, the amount of taxes people pay. But getting back to your question, yes, I think we have to figure out how we get outside, how we make that happen that's affordable, where everyone can thrive and work together on. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Denise. And Michael, you are next up.
I suspect you would have thought that I might push back a little bit on the premise of the question and you will not be disappointed in that. I first of all.
I know this is your red meat, man.
Yeah, I like to point out that we're actually about 55 square miles geographic size, which is the same as Minneapolis and St. Paul. And we have a tiny fraction of the population and a tiny fraction of the tax base. So I assure Ms. Welty, if she thinks we're taxed to death right now, keep sprawling. You won't believe how horrible it's going to get before it gets better. We need to start making better decisions. Now, the question specifically said we've had policies to make it more expensive to develop on the periphery of the city. That is not at all true. What we have in fact done is we have, have, we have identified how much it actually costs to build infrastructure, to build out into those areas. And we are no longer as a city subsidizing, but rather those who wish to develop that area must pay that full expense themselves. Because if they don't pay it, it's the taxpayers, as Ms. Welty said, who end up paying it. Therefore, the policies that we're putting in place, they appropriately reflect the true cost of developing in sprawled-out areas. More importantly, now when you do the comparison to some of the costs with infill, which we're making easier to do, it becomes a better economic, economic case for doing that. Now, I've been big in infill development. The uptown neighborhood didn't exist when I first ran. It's there now. It's, it's successful. We've seen some really cool developments or redevelopments in that area. That is the future. There is a tremendous amount of space along major corridors via Broadway, Second Street, Fourth Street, all over the community that are ripe for upzoning for medium and high-density mixed-use housing, walkable neighborhoods. This is the way of the future. This is what's getting developers excited. This is the stuff that pays for the taxes in the community and helps everyone else out. So I think the way that we're going absolutely to the premise of the question, the part that, yes, there are more parts of Rochester that we can see more development in, but no, I'm not interested in subsidizing sprawl.
And thank you, Michael. And with that, Mark?
Sprawl is generally, and rightly so, considered outside the city limits. There's no such thing as sprawl inside city limits. One of the things that we have to recognize is, yeah, the developers pay, but then ultimately that doesn't get paid by developers. It's getting paid by the people who buy those homes. It always trickles down to the homeowners. If it costs a lot of money to build a house or property, it all comes back to us. And right now, the narrative is that we're going to build up the center of the city at the expense of diversity of housing. We need homeownership options. Well, we can say that we want to do that, but we're not really doing it. We're voting for high-end luxury apartment buildings with no affordable units, no ownership options. They might come, but we have to be able to build neighborhoods around the schools. Where are the schools going to go? They're going to go on the edges of town. So we have to really figure out how to drive down property taxes. And the way you do that is you create a bigger tax base. How do you create a bigger tax base? You get more people to move here. And if there's no ownership options, they're not going to. So, you know, this whole notion of sprawl always seems a little weird to me. And, and I'd also like to see some credible data that shows that property taxes do go up if we grow out towards the city limits, because I don't believe that's true. So we do need to figure out how to, it goes back to question one. How do we fix the, the housing shortage we have? We're not going to fix it by going just vertical downtown. That won't work. That's a pipe dream.
I believe, I'm getting mixed up with where we're at, guys. Are we onto Denise?
I answered already.
Perfect. Then Eric, you are up.
All right. Thank you, Rick. And talking to the stakeholders in the short-term rental market, the vacancy rate has declined much quicker than that of the hotels in our region. This clearly demonstrates the visiting public's desire for this niche product. What are your views on short-term rentals? And we'll go back to Michael first.
Well, I'm on the record on this one because myself and a former councilman, Ed Ruska, brought some policies forward on the, on the storm ordinance. And in general, I am supportive of allowing it as an option. I do have concerns about the concentration in certain areas. Nobody wants their entire neighborhood to be turned into Airbnb, particularly if it's a residential neighborhood. So I am supportive of making sure that they are regulated and they have to pass the same health and safety standards as other hotels and they're subject to the same taxes, which some folks are doing that right now, some are not. But then there also has to be mechanisms for enforcement and to prevent an overall clustering of these in the primaries. And we know if we let this thing go completely, run amok, everything around the downtown and St. Mary's is probably going to end up as an Airbnb. And that can be really frustrating in a residential neighborhood. It's, it's actually easier to do. I know they're doing some of the, in the Berkman building. And that's not so bad because they have their own dedicated parking and you don't have to worry about people banging suitcases in and out overnight. So I certainly understand the concern that's out there. These are businesses. These are not homes. They should be paying business taxes, not home taxes, because home taxes are, are much less. But I'm willing to work with the people who want to invest in storms and have them in the community. And I think where we're at with our organs, we are allowing that.
All right. Thank you. And Mark, do you want short-term rentals?
Yeah, so we live across the street from an Airbnb, I think it is, or some kind of short-term rental. My neighbor is a long, is someone who has rented for a really long time. Both our backdoor neighbors are renters. And for the most part, that really doesn't bother me. The people that thus far have been, you know, renting these places are, have been, you know, people of, you know, good, upstanding jobs or whatever, and we haven't had any issues. The problem that I have is that, you know, if there's too much in a, you know, if there's too high a concentration of those in a neighborhood, that does become a little problematic. And they should be regulated a little. I think that, you know, a homeowner should be able to do with their home what they wish. If they wish to rent it out, fine. There's definitely a market for it, obviously. I just don't want to see, one of the things I don't want to see happen is like a five or six-bedroom house now becomes an itty-bitty little mini apartment. And I think that is starting to happen in some instances and that's really got to be regulated. But for the most part, I don't have a problem with rentals as long as there's not a ton of them. It does bug me a little bit that there's now these short-term or long-term rentals and what was advertised to be an apartment building, you know, two floors of essentially what is an Airbnb. I don't particularly like that. That increases the, you know, concentration of short-term rentals here. I would prefer actually to have more ownership options in the development that's catty-cornered to me. But no, I mean, in general, no, I don't have a big problem with short-term rentals. Just as long as there's not too many of them.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Denise?
Yeah, this is, um, this is a good subject. I, I am very pro short-term rentals. I have several friends in the city that actually are in the business for that. I think they have every right to do that, to operate that way. They said that there is not a decline. It's actually picked up quite a bit. There's a little bit of difference between VRBO and a short-term as far as I'm concerned. And I don't know if any of you, and Michael, the way you travel, you've probably stayed in quite a few VRBOs. Okay, myself as well. And I know the paperwork that I have to go through and what the owners have to go through is incredible. I pretty much have to give my life story when I, when I do rent one. There's a lot of families that come into this town, into our city, and I've helped a few of them offering services that are staying here for mail and they need a home. You know, I think the hotels are trying to, you know, make this a big controversy between them and the short-term rentals, which I think is totally unfair. There's a lot of folks that come here with cancer, with their families, their dogs in tow, whatever. They need these homes. And I tell you what, the ones that I know in the area that are real close actually to St. Mary's are amazing. And you would not know their short-term rentals. And the folks that I know personally want, have told me that they pay 15.75% per dollar on every dollar they take in. Now, they said VRBOs, they said if you do, you work 50%. Now, this is coming from a really good source that owns these across the country. But he said a lot of the VRBOs are not, 50% of them in our area aren't paying taxes. And then I also read another, and I could be wrong on this, but I also, it was a little while back where they said if you're doing short-term rentals, your, your property tax is going to like triple. You know, how fair is it to people like me that want to retire in a few years? I own a company southwest near Fallwell, but I want to keep this home. But I may want to go away for three months out of the year. Why can't I rent it out? What's, what's the problem? I think it's on the increase. I think there's a lot of folks like myself and my friends and neighbors that are in it to stay. So I think we need to be supportive of it. I think it helps our community and gives options. And that's huge as we grow. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. I am next up. And I think one of the important topics, especially as it relates to development, both commercial and for housing, is tax increment financing or TIF. And over the course of the last few years, a lot of projects have taken advantage of the tax increment financing that both DMC and the city has offered to bring new building and new development. taken advantage of the tax increment financing that both DMC and the city has offered to bring new building and new development to the downtown core area. Please, for our audience here, just describe your perspective generally on the use of TIF as a development tool. And, you know, as it relates to some recent restrictions associated with TIF, are you concerned that the more restrictions tied to tax increment financing may have the effect of blunting what would otherwise be a positive influence on incentivizing development? And I believe, Michael, you are up.
Okay. I can see both sides of the TIF deal for sure. I actually believe I have the all-time record for most dollars of tax increment financing voted against on the city council. And I believe I just barely edge out Nick Campion on that one. But I've seen a lot of good things happen with it, too. TIF is a little bit about your personal values. You have to pass a but-for test. And one of the disappointments is I see some things getting approved that clearly would go forward without the TIF. The example is when Javon Bay was building Miracle Mile, and he hit some bad soils. So he came back to the city council and said, oh, my rate of return is lower. I need some more tax increment financing. You know, the city council should have told him to pound sand, but instead we gave him more TIF. And that just leaves a bad taste in everyone's mouth when you see abuse like that. There's also very good uses that I've seen, and probably the number-one use, and people don't realize this in the community, is small assistance on affordable housing projects throughout the community, particularly 4% and 9% projects. I am a big believer also in using tax increment financing for blight removal. We've done that with a couple downtown properties, that we helped improve the properties with the blight removal. We've also, I'm looking at my notes here. Good job creation is another great thing to do with TIF. Discovery Square One, that's actually got a lot of high-paying jobs. And Discovery Square Two, which is also likely to have a TIF component. You know, these are bringing in highly skilled workers, good-paying jobs, and we certainly need more of that in the community. And then there's little niches here and there where you can find fill-in. These are all good uses for TIFs. It is a good tool. We shouldn't universally say no. But for God's sakes, I don't need to put any more TIF into a standalone hotel again. I think we've done enough of that.
Thank you, Michael. Mark?
Yeah, I don't think the city overuses TIF at all. And one of the things that, I'm going to look at my notes, too. One of the things that I came across in the affordable housing data that I saw was, you know, right now aspirational goals is 35 to 40% of affordable housing. Right now, that's probably about as good as we can do. And if you look at the table, it says tax increment financing, about $4 million, to get us to 1,700 units in a five-year period from 2016 to 2020. We only have 1,000 units right now. And we have given a lot of TIF to a lot of these high-end luxury apartment buildings, which is fine. But they don't have affordable units. There are no ownership options. I think we need to reallocate some of that TIF that we would not give $10 million to a Minneapolis developer necessarily. We need to funnel some of that TIF into creating affordable houses, single-family, you know, incentivize the building of, you know, condo, high-density condo and ownership options. We, you know, TIF was originally developed for things like affordable housing and reducing blight. And it has been used here for that, but we need to continue to do that. Of course, we need to, the if-but-for argument is true, and we need to look at those. But it just was astounding to me that just to even get up to 35, 40%, that $4 million in TIF could be used. And I just, I think we need to rethink how we allocate our funds and stop putting so much into really high-end anything and start letting the developers get back into fixing up the residential market and ownership options. So.
Thank you, Mark. And Denise?
Sure. And I echo a lot what Mark is saying. I think we have to be careful where the TIF money is going. I think it's a great tool for developers and the city. I think we need to be careful in how the tax relief is given out. I feel good, uses of the TIF program would be affordable housing. Like Mark said, we need to really work on that with potential and also potential to bring in high-paying jobs. And I would like to see some of it possibly go towards like research companies that come into the area, things that would benefit all of us with, you know, like I said, with more jobs. I think we just have to be really careful where we put the TIF money. And I think like large existing companies that are asking for TIF for expansions should not be high on our list at all. So it's putting back and making the TIF money accountable to where it really needs to be put and used, put to good use. Thanks.
Thank you, Denise. All right. Next question is about supporting business. Rochester is very proud of the long history of innovation and care that the Mayo Clinic has provided our community and the world. With that said, do you think the city of Rochester is doing enough to support businesses other than those directly related to the medical community? Why or why not? And what do you think the city could or should be doing to support other businesses? And Denise, we'll start with you.
And I touched on that a little bit, of course, with the businesses. I feel Rochester kind of is stifling business owners, you know, quite a bit, which I'd like to see changed. For some reason, the current administration and government think that every business owner is rich and has a lot of money. And they are so heavily taxed in our town. The average person is not capable of understanding the stress and the commitment it takes to open a business. Been a small business owner most of my life. And it's hard. The local government needs to come up with solutions to make doing business in Rochester much easier and dealing fairly with businesses as well. And the key to having people want to come to Rochester to start their business, I think that's really important. We have to give those initiatives, like, look, we support small businesses. We want them to stay here. Oh, my God, growing up here, I've seen so many businesses closed down for, you know, for whatever reason. But it is really hard for businesses to stay in downtown Rochester, like I said, even if they've been down. So I think we can do a little more, a little better.
All right. Thank you. And Michael?
I think it's important to realize that business development is not necessarily the core function of the city. There are certain things we can do along that line, and we partner with EDAs to help do some of that. But, you know, we're largely about providing base services. And that's, you know, in terms of working with the development community, that's providing the needed development permitting and services. Obviously, we have public safety, public amenities, public works throughout the community. This is a little bit of an ancillary thing, and I always hear people who are concerned about, nobody wants to be a one-horse community, but you don't shoot secretary at either. And the reality is, is Mayo is not just the biggest employer. They're kind of like a bunch of the biggest employers because they have the practice, they've got the research wing, they've got a lot of their own facilities, managements, their for-profit sections. You actually see that even though Mayo is a big name in the community, there's a lot of diversity within that. I do think that, you know, taxes, everyone likes to complain about taxes. But the reality is, I choose the community I live in based on the amenities and the quality of life, and I like that here in Rochester. I can show you a chart that shows what the property tax rate is for the city of Rochester for the last eight years. And it's basically flat. In fact, from 2019 to 2020, it went down. We're projecting it could go down significantly in 2021. I believe our property tax rate is lower than every single community around us right now. And not only that, but I mean, for those of us who have seen other parts of the country to have this kind of quality of life for the property taxes that we pay in this community. And again, the city is only one-third of those property taxes. You don't get, our property taxes for residents are basically about 1% of property value here. You get on the coast, and if you can get under 2%, that's fantastic. We have an absolutely wonderful value-add quality of life, and we like it that way here in Rochester. I think that we need to continue to work with businesses to open up the opportunities. But I'm not one of these anti-tax folks, anti-tax crusaders who wants to cut our quality of life back to Alabama.
Can I just add something?
Certainly.
Hello? Okay. So, Michael, I'm all about paying my fair share of taxes, and I have paid plenty, let me tell you. But I also have to disagree with you on the tax rate of where we lived. I have too, lived all over this country and worked in the inner cities. And the quality of life here is amazing. I love this city. Don't get me wrong. But we have to make it affordable. And my, I have family members that are struggling. So we need to figure that out, you know, come up with solutions. I'm not about the problem. I'm about finding those solutions. It's not only going to work for me and my family, but everybody I represent. And I'm hearing over and over again, it's not just the taxes. They disguise them as fees, fees, fees. We have got to figure this out. Thank you. Sorry. I needed that.
No, that's fair. I mean, the tax rate is published data. You can look it up yourself. It's been flat for about a...
I'm well aware.
All right. Thank you to both of you. And we will let, we'll let Mark close out this question. What do you think the city should or could do to support other businesses?
Well, it's interesting. You know, we talk about, you know, it is true. I've talked to business owners downtown. They are closing left and right. We have commercial properties sitting empty. Libby's wanted to expand, couldn't because it was too expensive, and so they left. There's a clear problem in the city council or in the city itself could have tried to keep them to stay through incentives or something. So, yeah, you know, the city is all about infrastructure and stuff, but it's also our job to try to figure out how to make the city affordable and attractive. And right now, I love Mayo Clinic, obviously. I work for them, and I do some really interesting and fun things. But there are a lot of, and I don't know if this is the right PC term or not, but trailing spouses, men and women, both, who have a lot of skills that are not being used and can be held out as an incentive to other companies to come here and to work here. But the problem is, right now, is how do we attract business when we have housing crunch? We have a lot of rentals. We don't have a lot of ownership options. We've made infill development, or excuse me, development on the edges of the city as expensive as infill development. We're actively working at cross purposes to bringing in companies here that want to bring in people that want to settle and raise families. It's getting almost impossible. What's happening is people are moving out of town. Or they're having one spouse work here and another spouse working up in Golden Valley. And that's money that could be here in our town instead of being, you know, they're making their money up in Golden Valley. So people like Nolan Ryland, Nolan, tripping over my tongue, Nolan Ryland and Rochester area economic development. A lot of good ideas there. They've got an amazing plan. But ultimately, it's going to boil down to, and that's why my fundamental pillar is balanced growth in this town, is we can do as much as we want to attract. But if we've got, if we don't have a good diversity in housing, and if it's not affordable, and there's a place where people can settle down and live, we're going to have a problem to get them here, no matter what incentives we give them. It's fundamentally all about how we grow the city. And how we grow the city is by having affordable housing all the way up to the edges of the city so that everybody has options. Because if you can afford to live here, but you can't, excuse me, if you can afford to work here, but you can't afford to live here, we're not going to attract anybody.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And Rick, I'm going to turn it back to you if you've got any trailing questions, or if you'd like to turn it back to the candidates for closing thoughts.
I do have one more question that I received here. And it's related to businesses exiting downtown at the moment. You know, yes, we have the COVID pandemic issues kind of restricting access for hospitality places in downtown, paired with, you know, extensive infrastructure projects in the downtown area. And I believe we've seen at least three, at least three businesses close permanently and extended temporarily, temporarily indefinite, we'll call it. You know, and the COVID pandemic, obviously, is going to be an unpredictable issue that the city has to deal with going forward. But with those businesses leaving, what, if anything, can the city do to revitalize or continue to support the downtown area while the infrastructure projects are going on and during the pandemic? And with this, I believe we will have Mark kick it off.
Well, first of all, I don't, it's a problem of our own creation. You know, I think the heart of the city and some of the sewer replacement could have waited until some of those companies, some of those businesses got back on their feet. But the fact of the matter is, is that property taxes and rents are so high downtown that we need to figure out a way to get those reduced. How we do that is we, again, we have to take the pressure of, we have so much development downtown and such high-end luxury hotels and things like that, which are needed, and that's fine. But the minute you build a really high-end anything, property values go up, and that hurts the businesses as well. It's a really hard problem. We've painted ourselves in a corner. And I think the way we solve that problem is just by figuring out how to reduce, reduce the rents and property taxes on those businesses and, you know, support them by listening to them. We're not listening to the business owners. They were begging and pleading for that construction, but just wait a little while. And so we just threw gasoline on the fire. And we need to sort of figure out why our leadership is tone-deaf to those kinds of issues and just simply listen.
Thank you, Mark. Denise?
Yeah, this is hard. You know, it hits home. It hits home hard. You know, I've watched so many businesses close over the years, and it is due to, you know, being able to afford even to keep their doors open. And I know some people on there, you know, disagree with me, but the tax, the property taxes they pay in downtown Rochester to keep open business is incredibly hard. We have to come up with solutions, though. I mean, yes, with the DMC and the building, I wish some of that could have waited because it did just throw gasoline on the fire, like Mark said. You know, and we should have found a way to keep those businesses open during the construction. I was flabbergasted by that. I've been to other big cities where there's huge cranes overhead, but they still figure out how to keep those sidewalks open and people getting in those doors. And I think, you know, another thing we have to do is the parking. You know, there's got to be some sort of incentive for businesses to get back some of that parking that the city takes in front of their establishments. You know, we've got to just figure out how to support them. We need to get that cares money to them like ASAP, and I know we're working on that. But there's no excuse why this happened. There's none. It was failure to figure this out ahead of time. But what I can say is, let's learn from these mistakes. Let's figure it out going forward so it doesn't repeat. And that's huge. We got to learn from mistakes and find the solutions and work together on that. Because, you know, this is not, not good. There's just too many closing. Every day, I'm waiting for someone else to close. And that's a sad thing to happen in the city.
Thank you, Denise. Michael?
This is sad. I've run my own small business for a long time, and I don't have brick and mortar, which makes it a lot easier for me. A lot of the comments about small businesses paying disproportionate taxes, that is a real issue. It's not anything that the city or even the county have control over. That's how it's divvied up, is entirely controlled by the state. It's something that should be fixed. Additionally, we tend to put everything on property taxes, and I've been a huge advocate of adopting more equitable fees, and not necessarily to increase revenue, but rather to more equitably split the costs around the community so small businesses aren't hit so hard. But even that can be controversial as well. I do think that this isn't a 50-50 problem with construction and COVID. This is a 90-10 problem. COVID is the biggest issue that we're facing, and restaurants cannot be successful at 50% occupancy. So it's sad that we've lost some, and we're probably going to lose a lot more because of 50% occupancy plus running a more expensive business model. You just can't be successful in the current marketplace. The downtown rents tend to be very high. There's two ways to look at that. That means there's a lot of demand. But there are some things communities can do, and I think we should look at doing that. A lot of times, you can potentially create a fee for vacant commercial space to incentivize getting folks into those spaces. So there are some creative ideas that are out there. I am actually an optimist on downtown. For all the talk of the construction, we have a total of five blocks closed downtown right now. And in a few days, it's going to be three blocks. And those three blocks have been part of a multi-year process working with those businesses. What really makes a business successful is customers. And we are adding more and more housing to the downtown. There's more hotel rooms being built in the downtown. Once you have people living in a neighborhood, they tend to spend seven times as much at businesses in their neighborhood than people who are just visiting the neighborhood during the day. So I think the long-term prognosis for downtown is very good, but nobody asked for a pandemic. And this is, it's devastating, and it pains me because I know a lot of these folks, I've known them for a long time. Nobody wants to see this. We should all be, place the anger where it is, the pandemic and the lack of response.
Thank you, Michael. And I believe we're reaching the end of our hour here. So what I'd like to do is give each candidate the opportunity to...
So what I'd like to do is give each candidate the opportunity to provide some closing remarks. Uh, to attendees and for those that will be watching this later on. So with that, uh, Denise, I believe we'll start with you.
Sure. Well. I'm really excited to have this opportunity to speak with you guys today and I'm really hoping that I can work with all of you in the future. Um, you know, and that's, and that's how we come up with solutions. I think we're, it, Ward Two, we're ready for a change. I think I can bring that. I think I'm ready. I'm one hell of a team player. I have some really great ideas that I'm ready to share and, and throw out there. But um, you know, it's, it's just important that we learn what, what hasn't worked. We have to simplify things going forward. I think i- things have gotten so out of hand and so complicated and rule over rule. And we need to figure that out as well. Um, but I'm just excited to have the opportunity today to speak a little bit on, on behalf of myself. And um, was, would be really excited to represent my ward and work in the community that I love and grew up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to engage with the community. I appreciated uh, the uh, all the dialogue we've had back and forth over many years now. Uh, there's a lot of good ideas out there. There's a lot of things that we can do better, but I think we need to take a moment and realize how incredibly blessed we are to be in Rochester, Minnesota, the opportunities that we have. Because there are a lot of places that are not going to recover from this pandemic in the same way that we're going to be able to recover. And we're seeing exciting things happen in our community even through this pandemic. It's hard to be optimistic when you're seeing this kind of crisis staring you in the face, but we have some tremendous opportunities if we execute on them. We have an incredible opportunity to get a small starts granted, uh, proceed with construction of a mass transit line in the city of Rochester, which is going to open. Substantial development and affordability options along that entire corridor. We have tremendous opportunities to take underutilized sites along all of our ma- major corridors and make infill easier and more equitable. And we have a tremendous opportunity in front of us with the development code to ensure that we continue to add more flexibility. And adopt and map smart zones like things like R2X and TOD, which you've already helped us do. These are incredible opportunities in front of us. There's a lot of people who have their heart in the right place. Um, but there's also something to be said for having somebody who has the ability, the wherewithal and the history of getting things done. You've seen this in projects all over the city of Rochester, whether it be the hundred million dollar Berkman that looks gorgeous across from St. Mary's. Or any number of affordable housing projects constituting twelve hundred units that I've helped create in the community. It is important that we have leaders that can lead us through these tough times and get things done. And I thank you for your support and ask you, ask for your vote on or before August eleventh.
Thank you, Michael and Mark. Well, I, I think it starts with recognizing we have a problem. Um, because we do. Um, it's, it's, it's easy to talk about uh, transit lines and, and. The hundred million dollar Berkman and then turn around and talk about affordable housing, which we don't have. High-density downtown needed, hotels downtown needed. But if you look at the number of permits that have been issued from year to year, there's a thirty-five percent decline. In issue, uh, in the issuing of permits. We need to make the permitting process easier, more streamlined. We need to make it less expensive to build affordable homes. And we don't have those right now. The occupancy rates in these, in these new apartment buildings is low and uh, and a, and a house stays on the market for a microsecond. And then it's gone. We have an inventory issue and we're, we're going to continue to have an inventory issue. If all we do is focus all our energy downtown. Yes, again, we, we do need. We have DMC, we do want walkable downtown, nice living, et cetera, et cetera, but we're doing it at the expense of the rest of the city. And uh, that, that's got to change. And so, you know, let's, let's stop the false narrative of sprawl. There's no such thing as sprawl in the city. It's growth and if we don't grow, we shrink. And right now, this, we're just. We're working at cross purposes. The direction we're heading is the wrong direction. It isn't working and it's getting worse. So yeah, it, it is definitely time for change. Uh, so. Let's start by recognizing there's a problem. Let's figure out how to fix it. You guys are a big part of that solution. And uh, I would ask very humbly for your vote on August eleventh and um. Uh, whether it be Denise or I, it is definitely time for change.
Thank you all uh, for your participation today and uh, John. I think you had mentioned previously that we will have. The recording of this available at the RAB YouTube channel. As well as on our social media and you'll have the ability to share the link on your respective campaign pages. And through your various social media outlets as you continue what I'm sure has been a difficult virtual campaign trail thus far.
Yeah, and thank you for uh, keeping your answers succinct. It was, it was nice not having to ding a bell. I think it seemed more like a conversation. Uh, you know, I wasn't saying, you know, I wasn't doing this, you know, behind the screen, so uh, I appreciate it. And you know, I think we've all had conversations and now I'll shut up because yeah, I, I tend to get long-winded myself, so. Uh, but thank you for your participation.
Thank you all for hosting.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thanks.